... thing that you're covering in a way that this could approach this whole process of accreditation for the state, you know, you always want to say, "Well, that's what we need to accomplish for the state." But what do we really need to do?
What are we going to get out of it?
And the process that was followed. You know, the kudos are offered. It was a very good process, very engaging for the community. And out of that, I think we were able to identify a number of things that we ourselves feel like we need to accomplish in line, perhaps, with where we need to go with the state. But I think that's the whole story is where we believe as a community and as educators and aboard and parents that we need to go. And it's certainly a great outline, I think, in our public interest. Thank you. Anything else, Steve?
Yeah. I just want to come to remember that she's part one person on accreditation, done a great job. One of the takeaways here is this is a five-year process and we're on track. We're in great shape. We're completing that process successfully when we reach your target. You'll get regular reports on this, the reports on the state board, outcomes, as she mentioned. That's a significant part of this accreditation process. And that's one of the reasons why you hear about those things regularly is pretty much in our life.
Okay. Under curriculum report, item number two, International Society for Technology and Education Conference Report. So Roxy and me, they're Kate Crusader.
Yeah.
Either that, it's going to rain in here.
Good evening. Roxy Schaefer, Director of Technology, and we're here to talk about a conference that we attended. So on that conference, we took Lain Shuffleby, Instructional Technology Coordinator, Yuri Dubrinsky, Math, Garden City High School, Sarah Dubrinsky, Resource Math at Charles Stones, Becca Burden, History at Bernadette Zentz Intermediate, and then Amy Golay, First Grade Teacher at Jenny Wilson. So tonight, we're going to share with you some of the highlights of the conference, some of the takeaways that we had. And I think you'll get a pretty good idea from the group what we found beneficial, at least I hope so. And I think you're going to see the things that Lain and I went to look at are very different than what our classroom teachers looked at. First of all, the numbers. This conference has 18,500 attendees. It is one of the nation's largest conferences. There are over 6,000 exhibitors. And you can spend hours and hours and hours in the exhibit hall, which is what I did. There's eighty-seven countries in attendance and then fifty U.S. states. And then presentations to select from were 2,860. So there was no time that you could possibly be bored. I want to show you a little example of the exhibit hall. Easy to get lost in, lots of steps. It's the only time in the last year I've gotten my 10,000 steps in was during this conference. So the big session that I went to was Do As I Do: Modeling the Use of Technology. So I went to sessions that dealt with staff meetings to kind of help our department. And so Do As I Do: Mentoring Technology. So when we have staff meetings, we should be using technology. As you can see here, Lain is using NearPod, which is a new product that we are implementing this year. So in meetings, we should be using NearPod. We should be using the tech that we are implementing, Showbee, the one iPads, anything that we might be implementing. And then the second one I looked at was, or the second highlight was, from Chief Technology Officer to Chief Storytelling Officer. We need to tell our story. We're pretty, everybody kind of knows when we don't do our job because we kind of hear it. But nobody knows that, gosh, we had two guys that spent 23 hours on a weekend to replace the back-end switch. So, and nobody saw it on Friday. Everybody was working, they came back on Monday, everything was working. We need to brag about that. We've got some awesome staff members that I don't think we do a very good job of being sure that the entire district and city knows what these, some of our people are doing. So we need to do a better job of telling our story. The third thing that really stood out for me was I was selected to be interviewed at ISTI by Illuminate Education. And that's really not a tribute to me. Illuminate was implemented last year. And I think Crystal Stein, that's Director of the Critical Assessment, has been here to talk to you about that. She did a bang-up job implementing this. We're still in the process, but we are far further in our first year than we ever dreamed. And the company recognizes that because we set goals with the company. So they asked if they could interview me on our process. And in the middle of that, they kind of switched the agenda on me and said, "We're going to partner with Google Education. What do you think of that?" Well, that's pretty cool because we're implementing Google Education. So we looked at the pros of that and how that's going to affect our teachers.
I went and looked at a lot of PD sessions to bring back to the teachers, a lot of tools to bring back to teachers. And the one thing that seemed to be the talk of people in my job was badging, giving teachers badges. So my, I am badged now. I'm a Microsoft Innovative Educator, but Apple does badging. Cisco came out with a new thing called the Inspired Educator, and they're working with the Center for Innovative Learning and Collaboration. They're badging. NearPod, Google, when we talk about badging, you go through a process to earn a badge, and it's on your own private time PD. And you do the things that appeal to you, not what we want you to do. So if you're in robotics, if you go to Cisco's Innovative Educator, they have classes, courses that you can take for robotics, and they have hundreds of them. So my thinking was, it's an option, or it's an opportunity for us to celebrate our teachers and what they're doing. A lot of our teachers do things on their own time and we never care about it. At first, I was a secondary teacher, so I didn't get the badging thing at first. But teachers get really excited about it. So we're thinking, how can we reward these teachers? How can we get them badges? Capes are also good. But the benefits to this are, we have had some pretty ineffective professional development models. People come in, they sit down, you tell them how to do something, off they go. They don't use it, they don't remember it. This is what they want to know on their own time, then they get to implement. They almost keep a portfolio. On the Microsoft side, they keep it all online for you, everything you do, and add up your points. The other thing, I think, is the recognition of, when you, when we intend a PD class, we fill out a form on MyLearning, and we write in different areas and provide comments. And that's where it stops. So we don't ever know, did they ever implement any of that? When you do the badging model, they have to include how they, they have to show the process and the results of that. So it's a much, it's further. It's not just sitting, "Kid, it's, okay, I learned this, now I'm going to put it in my classroom, and how did that work in the classroom, and how can I show the student learning from it?" So why would professionals be interested in earning badges? Well, okay, first, it's fun. And then next is, you can just show what you know. It's rather than being told what you're going to learn today. Get models of growth mindset. We are learners as teachers. We should model that for our students. So, you know, you start putting these things up in your classroom, your students go, "Hey, what was that? What did you get that for?" And then you're modeling that you're still a learner as well. So that was my main emphasis this year at ISTI.
So the really cool thing about ISTI is you can create your own kind of learning experience because there's so much to do. And this year, I wanted to focus a lot on what I did on virtual reality. It's been kind of talked about the last couple of years, but it just seems it's really taken off. So I wanted to learn as much as I can about it and see what I can bring back. So I was thinking about the SAMR model, which is something we talked about when we implemented the iPads, which is basically at the R level, it's called redefinition. So using technology in a way that would not be possible without it. And virtual reality has the potential on hitting those types of things. And I got two videos I wanted to show you guys about what is possible with it in education.
But the videos aren't on there.
The videos I'm playing.
No.
So this is a video, you guys can look it up later. It's actually kind of cute. It's a cat dissection. So you put on these goggles and there's a little wand thing, and you can go through the different layers of the cat. And then you're learning about the different organs, the different tissues, and it's a completely humane way of dissecting a cat. So I just thought it was amazing. And then this one, it's an Apollo 11 simulator. So you're basically, they take you through the Saturn V rocket. They simulate like, you're actually put inside the cockpit of like the lunar module, and it blasts you off, and you're like looking at Earth with the goggles, and you're thinking, wow, you know, you got to sit down because it's just so realistic. And you get this in front of kids, and it builds, definitely helps them understand more than just reading from a textbook. I think it builds that empathy, just experiencing that. And I could talk about it, and it's like, okay, that's kind of cool. But when you put on the headsets, it's amazing. So those are two different ones, but there's so many that they're coming out with on the next slide. The content, it's actually two parts. Blue Ocean Market, meaning there's education, there's a lot of money to be had in education from companies, and virtual reality is kind of an open space. So these established companies are jumping in. They're basically saying, let's develop content for education. And there's this competition to make good content. So there's a lot of companies coming in. And if you look online, there's some pretty cool things that you can, some of them are subscription services, and some of them are just downloadable educational experiences. But there's a lot to do there versus there's actually a lot of apps where you can develop the content for virtual reality. So for example, CoEdu, and there's a couple of other ones where you can build items and develop a scene around it. So picture, you know, an English class writing or reading something, and then you can use virtual reality to build a scene and actually walk around the scene that you wrote about. Or having somebody read your story and then build a scene based around that, so focusing on like the descriptive part of it. So there's a lot of potential in that that maybe is worth exploring in the future.
So I really want to do some interactive things. And you'll see in the next video, those are all wires, just PVC piping, cardboard that I spray painted. Thing I'm going up on right now is called a Makey Makey, and this is an off-brand one. That's a switch right there made out of toothpicks, tinfoil, and alligator clips. If you want to play the next video, when you put all of that together, it turns into a whole interactive robotic game field. So if you watch the screen and me putting things in, something just popped up on the screen. It's making noises, too. And it's keeping score. And then that button didn't work. That button is actually this button. It's made out of tinfoil and cardboard, and that's it. It's got two alligator clips together. When you push the button, it connects the circuit, and then it actually should make a life support system pop up. That's a whole Martian habitat. And the story based around it is, I had this out for the robotics camp, and the Martian, the astronauts, all my action figures, were inside the thing the whole time, just doing all their scientific work. And then the last day, the habitat blew up, blew up on all sides. So they had to get the Martians back into the habitat, put all of the force field rings in, and then turn the force field on using this button. If they could only get four rods in, they could only save three astronauts, and it would pop up. You can save three, choose wisely. If they got all of them in, they could save all of the astronauts. And then that message would pop up. I had to write all the code for this and build it. It uses a lot of that logical, mathematical thinking to write the code to make everything work the way you want it to. My idea for this was actually get it into English classes, make an interactive diorama. So read a story and then have buttons that the kids can make. And when you push the button, something pops up about what happened in that story. Or they can create their own game using a couple of buttons, and they can play their game while they're looking at their diorama of the story that they did. The other thing I thought, the other thing I saw was interactive timelines. So they were selling timelines for like $150 there. I was like, I can make that. I can have the kids make that. Put a QR code on the timelines, and then when you take your iPad up, you put it on the QR code, and it pops up a whole website based on what they were learning about. They could pop up a game based on what they were learning about. So you could do it in math, social studies, reading, science, anything really. And it's just making it all interactive. These are $25. This is free stuff I had in my garage. So it's not that expensive. And then you can also hook up microcontrollers and make it move as well. So servos. It's easy enough to pop a servo in there, write two lines of code, and you can have garage doors open. They had whole things with hummingbirds. They're about $100. But you can make all these interactive things where you've got things spinning around in circles, you've got fans moving, you've got things where if you push a button, things will pop out. So there's a lot of really neat things that the kids can do that I might even think about. But the kids will think about them. And they're really easy to do, and this is something where teachers don't have to be that techie. It's drop-based coding. I've got an English teacher who's already 100% on board. She's going to build a diorama, and she just wants me to teach her the code part of it. And that's for a special education class. So there's a lot of really neat things that the teachers can do with this stuff.
All right. One of the things I was most excited about was the ClassDojo part of it. Being a first grade teacher, my kids love the Dojo and avatars. And we got to have like a first-time experience with some of the ladies that work at Dojo and kind of see what they had planning for this new, this new school year and kind of see what was coming out. And the newest thing is portfolios. ClassDojo is a behavior management system that connects parents, and it's also a communication tool. So not only is it all one app for messaging and communicating, but also you can share photos and videos throughout the school day of what your class or your students are doing. And so now ClassDojo has added portfolios. Next page, please. And basically, it just allows you to use it even more in your curriculum and your lessons. You get to allow the students to get creative with their homework, their learning, and share instantly with their parents. You can assign activities to the students to complete. They can do videos, they can annotate on pictures. You can see the ladybug, and they can annotate on it. They can journal or blog on there. And I think that's about it. But the teachers approve all the posts before they're shared to home. And then families, they can leave encouraging comments, and the kids really, really enjoy seeing that. Oh, and this just tells you that you can, the four things. So when the teacher goes in there, you put your activity name, you give the instructions for them, and then you pick what it is they want to do, and then you sign it to the class, and it goes instantly through there. And these portfolios also travel with the student from year to year as long as that next teacher is using ClassDojo.
And what were you interviewed for at ISTI?
I don't know if I can say the company name correctly. Fossett? F-O-S-S-E-T-T?
They contacted Amy and asked to interview her and get her input on some things.
And I'm still actually involved with them. They contact me once a week, and they just kind of see from my, from a classroom teacher perspective, kind of what I would like to have as a teacher for my students for reading and take-home reading materials, online-based stuff. So that's really cool that they, they want little first-grade teacher input, but...
And that was very cool.
So Amy and I went to some poster sessions together, and what that looks like is, it's actually mostly kids or educators and teachers bringing their students there, showing off some of the work that they're doing in their schools that's actually practical application. And so one of the poster sessions we went to was Digital Superheroes. These little kids are from, oh man, is it El Salvador? I think it was El Salvador. And their presentation to us was about how they became digital superheroes in their school to present digital citizenship to their peers. And so they were like a team, think of it as like a student council team in a way. And they created these cool little videos in their superhero costumes, and then they would play it for their, their classroom teachers would play it for their peers. And it was all just about how they became digital citizens, and it embraced the ISTI standards on digital citizenship. And so they were adorable, and their teachers did not tell us anything of what they did. It was just them. And we got so many ideas from that that Amy and I would, we're going to think this year, we'd like to bring it back to our building. My idea is I run student council, so making student council a huge piece of this digital citizenship world. Our librarian already does biweekly lessons, and so I can see how we could work with her and what she's presenting in addition to our kids actually telling their peers why digital citizenship is so important and all the cute little things that they can do. So we've brought back millions of capes in Lainey's suitcase to hope that that's something we can bring to Garden City, is letting our children teach other, their peers about it as opposed to us just being like parents. Sometimes, most of the time, they learn better from their peers. So, yeah. I'm sorry. No, you're good.
Oh, no, I was fine.
No, you're right. Yeah. One of my biggest takeaways was gamification in the classroom. I'm all about student engagement. This conference was about student voice and student choice, and bit mojis, if you haven't told or haven't seen. Bit mojis are a huge thing. You can never have a presentation without them now, according to ISTI. And so one of the things with gamifications is, the first session I went to was a high school teacher who used it. And her first thing was like, "I'm going to tell you how I did it, and it's not even going to be anything that you're going to be able to use in our class," because she was a culinary arts teacher in the high school. And so her vision was like, how do you get gamification into a sixth-grade social studies class? I don't understand this, but she, she got you there. It's the basics of what we think, I think, gamification is, is like we put all these review questions and like these little cards and, you know, sort of like Monopoly. They move around a board, and they have to answer the cards from their peers. And I think that was our original idea of what gamification is, but it's actually not. Gamification is turning your classroom into the game. So immediately coming back from the conference, I was thinking Amazing Race because that's like my very favorite show to watch. And social studies, come on, like you traveled to different countries, it seemed pretty easy. And then I used my social media platform to ask parents, like, "Do your kids know what Amazing Race is? Come on, this is relevant, right? I watch it all the time. And it's 30th season on Netflix." And it came back that like no sixth grade or middle school teacher ever, kid ever, had heard of any of these things. And so I was sitting at my kitchen table one night, listening to my husband play Fortnite, which is a very popular game right now, not only amongst my middle-aged husband, but our kids in my classroom. And it kind of popped in my head of this session I went to and some of the sessions backing up to it about student choice and student voice. And so this year, I'll be implementing like a Fortnite-type gamification in my classroom. And it's basically a motivator. Like when we talk about technology, it's just using those little pieces of technology you use as far as like Kahoot and quizzes and NearPod. And it's going back to Lainey's badges situation. These kids think that getting a little piece of paper that has a badge on it is like a big deal, or in this case, they call it a shell on Fortnite, is a huge deal. I think Sarah's talked about it as far as class craft, getting a little pet with your little class crafting is a huge thing. And so it's just motivating them to do it, such as if you've heard of learning menus before, where it's like things you have to do or things you can do. By them just turning in a learning menu, they get XP points. That doesn't relate to their grade, but it's just encouraging that they actually did the work and they've turned it in. So it's a motivating factor to get that beat. Go back to behavior. This teacher used like, if you were not paying attention in a mini lesson that week in her class, you would get an egg taken away from you. And I guess that's a huge, big deal in the culinary world. If you don't have one egg, that's a big deal. You can't make cake, right? So in my concept, it's like, we use it with Dojo. And so for me, it's like if they behave and they get all of these XP points, they can turn those into Dojos, and those Dojos come rewards, and that just becomes a huge gamification classroom. And it's super simple because it's all working. But that was a huge takeaway of student choice and student voice and making your classroom a lot of fun. And learning new things, because I have no idea what Fortnite is. You have, I'm being real, like I don't know, I'm learning as we go. And that was a big thing, was like as educators, you have to know that sometimes you start this technology journey, and you don't know where it's going to end. And we know that as technology teachers.
They were so enthused and so excited and had more ideas and were not stopped talking about them that it was contagious. So they were a great group to take, and they brought home a lot. They've already been sharing with people. They've already done some in-service, a little first full-day in-service. So it will be spreading through. Do you all have any questions? Or now? Well then...
I actually do have a question about that Juggo app, and I don't know if it's appropriate in this setting. But so is that something that the whole school decides to take on, like the whole school will use it, or is that just individual teachers who decide to do?
It could be either or. Last year, it was just myself and a handful of other teachers in my school that did it. And then I brought it to our principal, and I was just like exploding all over about how excited I was about this and the documentation. Because when you do give behavior points, positive or negative, it documents the time you give that point and the date. And then it also gives you a section where you can write specific notes so that when you, for like SAT team or anything like that, or even just a parent coming and asking, "Why did my, what did my student do?", you can say, "Oh, yeah, this is what happened." And so we were always talking about documenting things, and I was like, "That's something that's so simple that we can do really quickly." And so now this year, my school, Jenny Wilson, has done it school-wide, including the secretary, the librarian, the interventionist, we're all on ClassDojo. And so if you see some student doing well in the cafeteria or the hallway or the bathroom or whatever it is that they're following champs, then that teacher or that staff member in the school is all on board with ClassDojo. And so the, so the parents can see that it's a whole school thing, a whole community really becoming family, I guess.
My parents are starting to ask her how to let her open house. I have a parent coming to me and say, "Are you using ClassDojo?" And I said, "Well, no, but I am using ClassCraft." And it was so important that she had me type it into her phone to make sure she spelled everything correctly, because she wanted to make sure that we were using some sort of behavior management in the classroom that was technology-based.
Because that was a follow-up question that I was going to ask, is have you seen an increase in communication with parents or even parent interaction using some of these apps because they're so easy? And I know I get little pop-ups. I used ClassCraft in one of my daughter's classes, so I would get pop-ups and see what she earned that day. So we might not...
Actually, one of the things we talked about in our brainstorming sessions in our hotel room, which was that you'd come back with so full knowledge, you were collaborating with all of between us four and how we can push this out, is I used to use an app called Seesaw, which was this portfolios piece that Dojo now has. So after this whole week at ISTI, there's no point for Seesaw anymore because it just added to Dojo, and it gave a streamlined way for parents to communicate to you, not just doing the pictures and the portfolio piece, but the behavior management piece is like really all in one. And I think it's kind of cool that the parents like it during the day, because if you're on it, you can see like your dropdown menu, "Oh, so-and-so's parents like this picture and this picture." And so it's kind of neat that they like to see what's going on in the classroom in real time, especially for those parents that maybe can't get away from the desk.
Right. And Dojo also translates, I think, 35 languages. And then you can see specifically what parents are translating and what language they're translating it. So that's a huge communication factor, because on Dojo, you have your school story and your class story. So we post a lot of...
Just tonight, actually, with that whole smart snack list that we have going around our district, I've had a lot of parents asking me if they can bring snacks, and so I posted that tonight before I came, and I had like ten parents immediately say they wanted that smart snack list, and they wanted to help out, and that's the most involved I've had that quickly, so it was awesome.
Well, I really love like some of the things that you presented, because I think it goes back to the olden, I haven't talked to a parent this summer, because his kid wasn't addicted to Fortnite. My husband's addicted, I think more than my kids. And it's awesome because it is a cost-effective way of award system as well, because kids care about skills and, you know, their avatars and things like that. So they just, it really is, I mean, it's just important and meaningful, that, that goal and relevance, so thank you for making the time to go and be a part of that.
Any other questions? By word of it?
Partnership, looking at a lot of the businesses and the technology initiatives that we have.
Like this time, I was saying, robotics a little bit.
Robotics a little bit.
Robotics a little.
Who are you working with for getting the, some of the stuff that you're going through the competition?
Yeah, we, like Troy, we went over and we got one of his mechanics to look at our robots, the Western Motors, and he got some suggestions there. So we go around when we need to get some help, things like that.
Provide a mix, too, because I've seen your drones, I've seen a few different businesses make, maybe use that technology.
Yeah, we, sometimes they want like a drone picture of their business, so we go around, get a drone picture, and then they give us a donation for robotics equipment and stuff, so that's, so it's kind of cool.
That's pretty much it, though.
Well, it's pretty impressive. I mean, after seeing some of that, I don't think I'll even suggest to bring back in my day, you know, the History of Jeopardy game.
Oh, I love that. I have a digital version of it, though.
I figured it's got to be.
I do, yes.
It's a classic, it's got to be. There's someone...
It is.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.